...of Cumberland City met regular sessions Thursday, January 4th, 2024 at City Hall. All members will present also in attendance with city reporter Kristen Mathis, Levi Page with the Stewart County Standard, and Tina Ramsey with Stewart County Streaming also some several city residents. Mayor Vaughn called for the meeting to order at 5:00 P.M. Called for the reading of December meeting minutes. They were approved on a motion by Milliken, second by Gillum. No unusual expenses were reported. New business, Ms. Melissa Dunlap came before the board to discuss the matter of changing her road name. She spoke to the board regarding the denial letter she received from 911 addressing. She was told the next step was to come before the board, the city board. Reporter Mathis explained to the board that the 911 addressing system did not have an appealing process set in place, the resolution that the city set in place in 2006 not having an appeal process either. City reporter, the city recorder's understanding was that there was not, there was nothing that could be done to the, to appeal the process of changing the road name once it was denied. Arteman Milliken explained that there was nothing that the board could do regarding the change. She explained the resolution that was made in 2006 was for the safety of the whole community. Next, Ms. Taylor came before the board with the possibility of a grant that the city could, would qualify for, Brownsville grant with the state program. Ms. Taylor wanted to ask the board to approve the start of the process to apply for this grant. After short, after a short discussion, descriptive discussion, Arteman Milliken made a motion to proceed with the grant application, second by Gunson. Arteman Gunson wanted to let the board know that the Christmas at the fire hall was a success with, and thank everyone that was involved, they were able to hand out about 99 toys to children. Mayor Vaughn called for other business, none was brought forth. Motion to adjourn was made by Gunson, second by Milliken. Meeting adjourned at 5:20.
You heard the reading of the minutes. If there's no additions or corrections, do I hear a motion except the read?
Motion.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Are there any unusual expenses?
Yes, sir.
Uh, new business, ordinance amending zoning 2024-06 and 2024-07. It's, uh, partials out here on Highway 46. Do you have any, anything you want to comment on or anything, sir?
Unless you guys have any questions.
Just to clarify, so the one ordinance is for Mr. Manners, lot two, that is 1.8 acres. And then the other one is for Ms. Martha, or Ms. Martha, Ms. Emily Vaughn, she gave me a verbal agreement that she was okay with passing this ordinance today. For the other two lots, it'd be lot one and lot three. Lot one being 1.91 acres and lot three being 1.56 acres.
The, the lot one is where you're building your-
Lot two.
Lot two is where you're building your house, correct, sir?
Yes, sir. Lot two is for me, lot one and lot three is for future.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to accept on the first read?
And this is just, it's just zoning from A, right?
Zoning from A.
Residential, right?
Yes, sir.
I make the motion.
Motion. Second, Linda. Uh, any, any further discussions or questions? Roll call vote, please.
Short?
Yes.
Gunson?
Yes.
Gillum?
Yes.
Milliken?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes, motion carried. Uh, resolution accepting services 2024-05, you want to discuss that?
This is just real short and sweet, the, the state with this grant that we're getting from ARPA. Gary will go for, me and Gary will go to Ryan June's and speak with Seth about a contract. Um, it's just a contract of the, the jobs that are going to be being done. This is just saying that we had to pass a resolution before Gary could sign the contract saying that we accept the services. We already accepted the bid from Rise, now we're accepting the services. So hopefully this will be the last time I have to come back for you guys, um, other than giving you a contract to show you what we, what we got, what we did, so.
So how long would, if we approve this, when does this get started?
We, we can go to Rise anytime after this is approved and have, and Gary and Seth can go over the contract.
Let's, let's hope all this goes through and everybody, I say everybody, the only one I know that has one started right now is Norster. That's the only one that's, has got a, got a project started. So, I love-
And it's for him to what?
Do the, the three projects that we sent on the scorecard with TDEC.
Right.
With our TDEC grant.
And he's just doing the engineering portion of it?
Yes, so he'll handle everything, except when it comes to bidding process, he'll do the, he'll put, he'll submit everything in the paper, do everything through Ryan Engineering, but then you guys have to, we'll have to come for you guys for the bidding process if there's more than, you know, we'll still have to come to you guys even if there's just one, but that'd be the last thing that the city has to do, other than receive the services, is to accept the bid from-
He sends out the proposals though?
That's in our contract.
Yeah.
I went over with Ms. Becky and that was, that was included, so.
Yeah.
I'm going to motion.
Second.
Resolution 2024-05.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn.
It's already been motioned and second.
I didn't hear the second. I'm sorry, it's sitting right here on top of you. I heard Linda say motion. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Roll call, please.
Uh, Short?
Yes.
Gunson?
Yes.
Gillum? Milliken?
Yes.
Vaughn?
All right. Oh, uh, Ms. Dunlap approached the city requesting sewer. You have that in there. And this is what's been, been worked up by Mike. And, uh, she's on septic tank now, and she's requested to get on sewer. And, uh, I lordy, that's quite a bit of money. And, uh, I, I haven't heard any more, have you? She hadn't ever come back before us. So I wanted to present that to y'all, so it'd be in there, and I want that to show in the minutes. And, uh, uh, she just said she's requesting the sewer right now. I don't know how we can, how we can afford that, I don't, I don't see. And the other two houses, uh, hadn't requested that, but that's to put it, uh, another small distance forward the two. And, uh, there'd been property purchased, and they hadn't come before us for sewer either. They'd wondered if there's any sewer or water in the area, and they've been told, so. And that's the property next to-
Ms. Belinda?
Uh-uh.
It's not?
Oh, it's, uh, it's, uh, property owned by the Housing Authority.
Oh, okay.
And, uh, the, uh, Dora Kirkland and her sister.
Okay.
Yeah. But I just want y'all to see that, to bring it before you. Anything else, call.
What, what about the Brownfield grant, where we at?
Um, me and Ms. Alexis, she's been so kind, she's been talking with Boo, so we're, we should be able to get help, just like TDEC, TAUD's helping with us with the TDEC grant. Boo's thinking that he has somebody that can help us with this Brownsville grant, so that way we don't make sure, we don't miss anything, we get the processing, but we have to take a course, and that's going to be on the 7th of next week.
On the 7th? Take a course for it to get the grant?
Well, I honestly don't know. It's just a course of the proposing of the grant, I guess, so.
Okay. But that is continuing to push forward?
Yes, yes. Ms. Alexis has been really kind and got those dates for me and everything, so she's been working with her, her lady that she's had, been in contact with over the grant, so.
Great.
Attorney Runyon and I have been discussing an issue here, and, uh, it was brought before us by Mr. Manners. He's looking at purchasing more of this property out here, and I brought this to Gary Jacob's attention today, and Gary Jacob said that if the city council, uh, so chose, he wouldn't have to go through the necessary steps to widen and length of his time of getting that property transferred from farming to residential. And can you, can you elaborate any on that, please?
The only thing I can elaborate on, and I need to disclose, I did the deed between this gentleman and the grantor, the one deed, that they've got a, they've got a plat, they've got a survey of all three lots. My understanding, Mr. Manners, you're here, you interrupt me, he's buying them a lot at a time, but because it's already surveyed and already plotted, and I think y'all have already approved the one lot-
On the first reading, on for the three.
Right.
So my plan, can I?
Go ahead, go ahead.
My plan would be, we went ahead and got these three. That's what I decided to get surveyed. It might have been two, it could have been three. There's no reasoning for the three. Like I said, shoot for three, hopefully two of them perks good, right, at the gate. Now, for future reference and stuff, I don't want to buy them all right now, I don't want to, but for future reference and stuff, it might be two, five, six years down the road, as I get a lot or two surveyed, they perk good. Once they perk good, bring it to you guys' attention, we get it passed, and then rezoned at that point. Not all at once, not 20 lots all at once, and then all of a sudden we approve them like that. It will be down the road, slowly but surely get done. And it just keeps us from each single lot having to go before the committee, alderman, in the paper, done, next lot, same thing, we're back before you guys on everything. And I believe this way would put us to where we would come before the alderman for each lot, or the set of two, three, whatever it may be, it runs in the paper, and then I'm good to go, right?
Well, and then not to cut you off, but the advantage of Cumberland City is, for the lots to change over to residential, that's building a tax base, so that's our advantage. But the disadvantage for the present owner, when she's not yet transferred those lots, she shouldn't be paying residential when it's not yet rezoned, when he hasn't yet purchased it. But for a builder or a young person to go through the rezoning process on each and every lot, when he's already got the plat, he's already got the survey, we already know what it looks like, it's nothing new.
And like I said, these lots that come before you, that I buy, um, due to the deal I made, whether they perk or not, I'm still bound to do as I said to her. So as you can see, if you know anything about the property over there, there's a lot of dips, a lot of valleys, a lot of setbacks, and a lot of gullies. And since it's all subject to high intensity soil maps, it's not just going to be creamy and easy for each lot to get a house built on it, so.
Uh, Gary Jacob says as long as he come before y'all with a survey, and the acreage would have to be accordingly for each number of the lot, but he would come before y'all, he wouldn't have to go back before the planning commission, and, uh, he can't build on it anything until David Kimberlin okay's it and gives him a building permit. But y'all will have to okay that before he'll do that.
And so you guys know, when I come and get a building permit, he takes all that into consideration, he knows about what I'm going to build. Through the builder process, he has to check everything off, do inspections, all the way to the final certificate of occupancy. So everything has to be met and up to snuff with him, in other words. And he stays on, if I could set him to start to the end of the job, to make sure it's up to code.
Okay, now whenever you do this, and you subdivide the property off like you're talking about, that's not a city street up there, that will be your private drive.
To my house, yes ma'am.
And to the other places, I mean-
For them three, that road that I, that you see, I got a driveway permit for in there now, will be concreted all the way to the top for my house. Now that will feed them two other lots, that's why we have, all lots that will be using that driveway is what we went ahead and got done. All the other homes in the future that may get put will all have either private drives or, it depends how it lays out, I haven't got that far. I just, I'm just theoretically speaking.
I know we've had problems with one bid that, and they've tried to tell the city, we have to keep the road up. The city does not do it, it's a private property.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to make sure.
I would try my best that every, I try, every house has their own driveway. That alleviates problems in the future questions, and my phone ringing, if I can. The only reason this one's sharing two others is because my house is going to be at the end of it, right? So I can make sure it's going to be concrete, not gravel, not going to wash, right?
Would y'all want to wait till the next meeting to vote on this, or would you want to vote accordingly, like he said, to be able to come before y'all, or do you want to wait till the next?
Does it like skip the planning commission meet?
Yes, yes, because it, it has to come here, and he's going to have the survey. Gary Jacob said that the city council could do that if they so, so wish.
Right, he's already got the survey. He's already got the survey of all the lots.
Those are the three we passed.
Yeah, we passed.
But this is the future, that he gets it and then come before y'all.
And before I can get it to you guys, they have to be surveyed, they have to have the soil map done, uh, the state has to come out and inspect it.
But why wouldn't you just go, and just out of curiosity, why wouldn't you go through the planning commission? If, if it's something that you wasn't doing-
Right, it's, why am I trying to cut off time if it ain't that important? Just for the fact of, I don't know, when I survey these, these next ones, whether it might be two, it could be five, but I don't have to do five or 10 or six at a time, I can keep it small in one or two, that way I'm not having to see the zoning commission or the committee every two lots increment, whether that two makes up 12 total or 15 total or five total, that would be why. And I think it would just alleviate, I mean, all it does is take a month off of the timeframe.
So we'd still, sorry if I can't-
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, so we'd still pass an ordinance, with, an ordinance and everything, each time he rezones?
Each time.
Yeah, okay.
Each time.
I just want to make sure on my part what I have to do.
You will be added to your tax base each time.
Okay.
But it kind of keeps it-
So you just don't want to go see the planning commission, you just want to come straight here?
We don't mind it, it's just, it's a meeting that-
They're going to pass on to you guys anyway.
Yeah.
Is that the main gr, I'm just trying to figure out why that matters, I guess.
I, I swear, like, it's just to alleviate an extra meeting, because obviously it's not that big of a rush, I could go tomor, uh, in a month or two, or this summer I could have five more surveys, go it back to the commission or the committee, and then they would have to meet. It's just to alleviate a meeting, that's all it is.
He had, he had approached me, and I talked with attorney, and then I, like I said, I talked with Gary Jacob today, and he said it was up to the city council.
And like I said, as, like, if one does not perk or something, automatically I'm getting another lot resurinated immediately to take that one's place, because that lot absorbs to the lot beside it that did probably. So that acre and a half, 1.8 acre lot, takes the 1.5, 1.8 acre lot beside of it and joins and makes a new lot, because if I can't build on it, it's all subject to perk, so that one's got to replace that one. So if I had plans to build a house on, let's say, that lot, and the one beside it that's in the near future, this one don't perk, that next one's next up, and instead of me having to run to the committee and say, hey, one of those three didn't, can we do this one real fast? All it would do is come to you guys and be from you guys forward, that would be it.
So basically cuts out a month?
Cuts out a month, that's all it does.
It's just, it's just speeding up the process, but it's up to you all, I mean, it's-
Yeah, I mean, it's really up to you all, it's just cuts off a month, I mean.
Yeah, I don't-
Like I said, it'd be up to y'all, if you want to approve that tonight, accordingly, we, we can vote on that tonight if you so choose, or if you want to wait till the next meeting to do it.
So, which I know you're on the planning committee.
All that we would do there would be, if he brought his paperwork in, we'd prove it just like we did the last time, then he would have to come to the city council.
Yeah.
Be right back here, yeah, that's the only difference.
Man, I don't have no problem with that, I don't. If the planning commission don't, I, I mean, I don't want to speak for y'all.
No, I don't, I don't see anything, because like I said, all we do is, he shows us a plaque, what he's got marked off and everything, and that's it, and we'll approve it.
Mr. Milliken, I think it would be a whole different animal if this young man were standing here saying, I think I'm going to buy this. Well, where is this? Have you had it surveyed? No. Have you had any lots approved over there yet? No. But he's already started the process.
Yeah, I see, I, I don't, I don't see a reason not, as long as the planning committee don't.
Right, 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 right.
I mean, it may have to, I don't know, but I'm not on a planning committee.
Like I said, I, I run this by Gary Jacob today, and he said that would speed up the process, and, uh, if you couldn't meet that time, if you, you didn't have, we, we had a time getting the form last year, but it was due to sickness.
Yeah, I mean-
Right, I mean, worst case scenario, you don't approve it, it's over feelings, but it just takes longer.
Trust me, all I'm saying is, is I just don't want to step on the planning commission's toes, I don't know. I'm not in, I'm not on the planning commission.
I don't want to step on anybody's toes.
The codes director is at our meetings, and he usually's there to present this to us.
Yeah.
And he goes over it, whether he approves it or disapproves.
And he could make sure the codes guy was at, if you needed him here at this meeting.
He said he could be here if he was needed, but he said, I don't know why, but that's all it was there. Because like I said, me and him, his ordeal is once I get past you guys, that's when I run into him, you know, and that's, that's a whole nother ballgame.
Do I, do I hear a motion to accept as long as he brings in the surveys and has a plat accordingly for the size of what he's asking for?
Just for the rezoning, right?
Yes, yeah. Come straight to y'all. Do I hear a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
Motion and second. Yeah, uh, roll call vote, please, ma'am.
Short?
Yes.
Okay, go Gunson?
Yes.
Gillum?
Yes.
Milliken?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes, motion carried. Anything else coming forward?
Yes, I have a couple things. So over the years with the water, we're small enough that I try to, if somebody can give me a call, our bills are due every month on the 20th. You have about seven days after the 21st to get your bill, your pot water bill in here and paid, it, we have penalties. But I normally try to give them a few more days, if they call me and say, hey, I'm going to be able to be here on the 2nd. I know the new bill's coming out, but I can pay out my last bill on the 2nd, this and that. Well, over the years, it's kind of ran into a problem where people aren't calling anymore, they're just assuming that we're not going to shut them off. So I started on January 1st, making sure that that, it's the, whatever the cutoff date, they're cut off, unless somebody calls me and says, hey, I'm going to pay tomorrow. I, I will, you know, we're small enough that we can do that, as, you know, but we've ran into the problem where, like I said, people, I've, I've let the people know that are, that do struggle to pay their water bill on time, that we were going to implement this, like, this is the way it's supposed to be, this is, and it's, and it's my fault, but it was brought on years, and people know everybody around here, I understand that. But it gets to be a problem whenever I have this Laura that's taking care of the water department, she doesn't know so and so, and know that they're going to pay, or, you know, so on and so forth. So I told everybody on the 1st of the year, you don't pay your water bill by the cutoff date, it's cut off. Well, we had about 10 people that were cut off because they didn't pay their water bill, nobody took care of anything, calling, letting the city know anything, so I cut them off. Well, I had Mike going out all through the night because I'm getting calls and Facebook messages, well, I paid my water bill online, but I have to wait till the morning to get it cut back on. Well, it is aggravating when you did pay it, but it's 7 o'clock at night, there's nobody here to turn your water bill back, your water back on. So what I'm coming to you guys for, our reconnecting bill, reconnect bill, is $25.
That's what, that's what we've voted on a long time.
Yes, I'm coming to you guys before you guys, because when it's after hours, Erin and Dover both charge extra money for after hours. If Mike has to come after he's off, after 4:30, I even talked to Mike and I said, our hours are, are 8:30 to 4:30, their hours are 7:00 to 3:30. So if they call at 4:30, Mike needs to come turn it off, because we're still open here, the utility department's still open. So I, I talked to Erin and I talked to Dover, they, they have a, a more of a reconnect fee if Mike has to come do it after hours. So my thing, I wanted to come, and just, I, I have to make a, I'll have to pass a resolution of ordinance, I'm not sure, I haven't looked into it, but I want to do has to think on, maybe we should after hours to maybe keep people, start making people pay their bill after hours, it's $50 instead of $25 to be reconnected.
There's no sense him going home and then him to come back.
Like Mike had to get out at 9 o'clock the other night, because he got a Facebook message, I, I paid my bill online, but it's not turned on. Well, we don't get here until 7 o'clock, so he wouldn't know.
Or we don't go do that.
Yeah, or we cannot do that, but then we have the problem where people are going to turn on their own meters, then we get into problems where that's an issue, they're not supposed to be able to turn on their own meters. The city actually is ownership of that meter. So, and I don't want to go out and buy a bunch of lots to lock everybody's meter that's-
Well, if they can pay it online, they should be able to pay it earlier instead of waiting too late.
Yeah, they wait until it gets cut off, and it's the, it's, I hate to say it, but it's the same people every month that don't pay their bill, and then call and say, well, I can pay it this day, well, I already cut you off, so it's off, it's off until it's paid. So that was one thing. I just want to put that in you guys' head, if that's something you guys want to do, I can write, I can see what I need to pass in order to change that, I just wanted to, I just wanted to mention it to you. Um, and then the next thing, unfortunately, uh, Mike called me this, this evening, um, he's going to have to have talking over it, um, for a while, so he's gotten with me, he knows how many days he has, how many, yeah, how many days he can be off with pay. The problem is, is he won't be able to come back for three months at, at full duty. The doctor told him today that it's going to be a minimum of eight weeks before he would release him to be off, back at regular full duty. So what he wanted me to come to you guys for, he's going to have to be off for sure for four weeks after he has a surgery, he's having surgery on his neck. He's going to be home, he won't be able to come in or anything, he'll be able to come in and do his paperwork, he said, he's got to do that, nobody else here can do it. But he'll be off for four weeks, and after that four weeks, he wanted to ask y'all for, for permission if he could come back at light duty. I called Tom Myers at Seals, they, I talked to him about our liability insurance, he said it's not, it has nothing to do with liability insurance, it's strictly a handbook, you know, what you guys want to call as the, you know, as our pay, people that pay us, what you guys would want to do. Tom said his only thing that he's seen in the past is if somebody is on light duty, they have to have somebody here with them all the time. So if Terrence was to be off that day, Mike's off that day. He cannot, because Mike won't be able to drive for four, for eight weeks.
He's been with us, like, over 23 years.
I absolutely think we should allow that, absolutely.
So I just have to have y'all's approval in order to let him come back to work at light duty, I can't just let him come back without y'all's approval.
Yeah, but understanding too, that, that the other guy's got to be there if he's-
Yes, and he has to-
He has to be off then we can't-
Yeah, because Mike can't drive, he won't be able to have, do have equipment, Mike will literally be here for guidance for Terrence, tell him what he needs to do.
Sure.
And, you know, if there was a leak or something, Mike can point at it, but he can't get down that hole.
Right, right.
Um, and, and go from there, but he can't drive, he, he would just-
I mean, if he was not be here, he could be in here doing paperwork too, though.
Yeah, but he, he, I don't know, that's just what Tom said, he, he's seen in the past, that wasn't a thing that we had to do with insurance. He just said normally, when it's a light duty like that, they have somebody here that's on duty with them, or they don't come in.
Can I make a quick recommendation?
Sure.
Absolutely.
Do get medical documentation and put it in his personal file.
Oh, yeah.
Not that I doubt, I know who you're speaking of and everything, but y'all have got auditors too.
Yeah, no, I definitely, anytime anybody's off like that, I have to have something stated why they've been off.
Put something in the file, just-
Yeah.
Nobody's got any question.
And I won't be able to let Mike come back full duty until, if it goes over that eight weeks, if the doctor has, gave me a release-
Yeah.
Then I'm going to have to come back to you guys after that eight weeks and say, you know, this is where we are, he needs three more weeks, or, you know. I'm just asking, right now his doctor told him eight weeks, no driving, after, after his four weeks off initially. They're working on insurance and stuff right now, what he's going to have to pay initially, They're working on insurance and stuff right now, what he's gonna have to pay initially, but they're hoping by the end of this month.
And, okay.
End of February.
Yes.
Is what the doctor's shooting for.
Got about three, I believe it's about three verbers in his neck.
Um, do we need a motion on this?
Yeah.
I make a motion.
Second.
Motion in the second. Uh, if it's money, I will be having to have extra help during that time, which Terrence, he's, he's, he can operate all kind of equipment, so we're not worried about that, but we'll probably need somebody to come in and, and assist if we have a, a bad leak or something.
And Mike has talked to Jacob, but, and he's over with the city of Dover now, and he said if something was to happen and Terrence needed help, he would do his best to get over here, and we already have him set in place payroll and all that good stuff anyway still, so. Uh, Short?
Yes.
Uh, Gunson? Gillum?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes. Thank you. Anything else come forward to board, if not, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Oh. Am I?
Yes.
I was just gonna get a little clarification, what's my? I was just gonna get a little clarification about the request to run the sewage to the Dunlap household.
Yes.
Was that declined or not decided on? I, I didn't really hear that anything was any decision on it.
It, it come before them and right now, the, the cost of it is what, is the, is, is the, the question.
So if there were more households that requested it, would that be a factor?
Yes, it'd help.
Yeah.
Yes, it would help.
Thank you.
The problem you have too is just, if we run it and it is a big cost and then if somebody don't want it, they would still have to have it.
They still-
It's had to pay for it.
Yeah, yeah, that would make sense.
And this, this quote right here is only for the house, this is coming from Ms. Belinda's house, Mr. Eddie's house, and then that house that's on the corner, that's, this is the quote for these three.
Yeah.
Cause that's only for two main homes.
And they haven't, neither one of those houses requests a tail on their own septic tank.
Yeah, I knew they refused it.
Anything else come forward to board, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor say aye.